Welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. Sorry if I'm a little jumbled. Wally and I traveled across the country. We're at my grandmother's right now. We're excited to have you here today from wherever you are in the world. We have some really exciting news to share with you today. Two amazing opportunities to learn. The first of which is going to have a lot to do with how you're showing up and transformations you may be making in your business and your brand this year is a really great opportunity coming up for you to learn and work with some of the best people that we know to talk about this topic. Who have cracked the code on using our platform to creating a beautiful website quickly. And we're going to show you a makeover of our own site. So we're going to be going through all of that here shortly. If you are here today looking for help, definitely go ahead and add your questions to the Q and A. We are here for you. I'm going to go through a couple of slides real quick and then we're going to have our guest speaker come out and share some information with us briefly. We are joined today by founder Greg Kilwin. Hi Greg. We also have Jessica, Julie and Colin from our team here. And Claire is going to be sharing some info with us here in just a few minutes. So if I can get my screen shared to work here properly, I can then show you guys what I want to show you. Okay, so today we are talking all about change, all about change. We are talking about the change that's in the air this time of year, right? We're talking about the fall. I'm going to actually, because I'm on this tiny screen, can we turn off our videos real quick, you guys? Sorry about that. Okay. We are, we're talking about all of the great changes that happened this time of year. You see the leaves changing around you. This is a great season here in the northern hemisphere in the autumn to start reflecting on how we want to be putting ourselves out to the world. Where, you know, we're seeing the world change around us, seasons shift and change in really beautiful ways. And this is in some cultures traditionally, also an opportunity to go and do a big cleaning and repaint your house and do all kinds of fun stuff like that. Change your wardrobe, take out the sweaters, start sipping those pumpkin spice lattes. But today we're talking about a digital makeover. So excited to talk about this today. So here's what we're going to do first. We're going to talk about an invitation that you guys have exclusive to a masterclass. That's hosted by some very good friends of ours, and this does pertain specifically to how you use your Get Oiling account. We're also going to do a big reveal of the new Get Oiling. We have some makeovers to share with you, both in how you can more easily use our platform, as well as just a general upgrade, little facelift of how our back office works. And then of course, as usual, we'll have our Q and A support and live reviews. So if you are here today and you feel stuck with something you've been working on, if you need help with anything, please go ahead and add that to the Q and A now. So that we can be working with you throughout the call. And if you would like to have your site reviewed, I know we didn't have specific signups available for today because I knew I was going to be traveling and wasn't sure if I was going to be able to be on this call today. Why don't you go ahead and let us know in the comments in the chat whether or not you would like to have a piece of your site or all of your site or your strategy reviewed, or maybe you're just getting started and you kind of need a little help with orientation. Let us know and we will reserve time and space for that at the close of our call today. All right. So in the future, if you want to be notified of these trainings, if you're watching this replay in the future, go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession to sign up. And then of course, if you would like for us to work with you one-on-one on a call like this, you can go to getoiling.com/webstatereview. All right. So what I'd like to do now, and we can actually go back to our, our videos, you guys. We have Claire from Grow Workspace here, who's going to be sharing with us an opportunity for you to learn from the Grow Workspace team about how to give yourself your own sort of digital makeover. So Claire, let's, uh, let's hear it. We're excited to hear about what you guys have put together for us.
Yeah, awesome. I'm still here. Um, so yeah, I'm Claire, co-founder of Grow Workspace alongside Chrissy Chin. So for those of you who don't know who we are and what we do, Grow Workspace is the content and educational resource to help make sharing a lot more efficient and effective by creating personal classes, graphics, newsletters and training for you all. And if you're here, I'm guessing you probably know who Get Oiling is. They are the website platform that we have created content for. So we work really well together. And because of that, we wanted to take it to the next level. So this coming Monday, we're hosting a never before done live masterclass training called, "How to Build a Wildly Profitable Website Without Knowing a Thing About Tech." So we keep hearing people, at least on our side of things, you know, I'm not tech savvy. I have a Get Oiling account, but I'm thinking about, when I think about, you know, putting stuff in it or building it out, I get overwhelmed. I don't have a lot of time to build a whole website. I don't really know where to start or what to write about. I used to do everything in person and now I need to do it all online and I don't know how to do that. I mean, also things like Facebook keeps marking my posts as sales posts. And I'm speaking more about the content we create in Grow Workspace, those posts that we create for you. People saying that they keep getting messages from Facebook saying, you know, my posts go against their policy and health and wellness. Leader, their leaders are checked out. I mean, so many pain points for people that in this season of change, trying to figure out how to work through, you know, we've heard it all. This year has been a challenge. And we really want to remove those challenges and give you some brand new options to take your business to the next level. So with all of those pain points, we put together this really amazing webinar or masterclass that will be, we'll be hosting on Monday, the 27th at 8:00 PM Eastern Standard Time. Or is it daylight time right now? I can't even remember which one it is. So planned for about an hour for this. In this masterclass, we will touch on three main points. So first, how to build a website in a day without being tech savvy. And that's a huge thanks to Get Oiling and their amazing platform. How to create not just any website, but a wildly profitable website. And we will give you a new way to create lifelong customers that fall in love with their products and lead to new brand partners. So there will also be a chance to grab a special bonus if you attend live. So make sure you register to attend, put it on your calendar and don't miss out. If you have kiddos or, you know, dinner that's around that time, try to get some help in hands so that you can be there live because we're going to have an awesome bonus for you. And if you have not registered, for those of you who are hearing this for the first time, you can go to growworkspace.com/masterclass underscore capital G, capital O. So Greg, I don't know if you want to pop that.
We have actually, Chrissy, I'm sorry, Claire. Yeah, so we, we have, and I don't know if you can see this or if there's a way for me to do this. But it is getoiling.com/growwebinar, G R O webinar for you guys. So if you can see that, I, I don't know if you can see that on my screen. Here we go. If you may be able to see this, getoiling.com/growwebinar is, is how you're going to get access to that.
And Greg, Greg, pop that in the chat as well. So that's perfect. And yeah, so we'll send out a Zoom link. So if you register there, you're going to get some emails. We'll send out a Zoom link to join Monday morning and again, Monday night, just before we start to make sure you're in the know. And we'd love for you to share this with your team and others, you know, that might be interested or struggling with all of the things, you know, I mentioned above, all of those pain points. So yeah, just share that link that Ashley just mentioned and Greg just posted. And I definitely recommend adding this to your calendar so you don't miss out and you're there to join us.
Yeah, thank you so much, Claire, for sharing this with us today. We're so, so very excited to see how you guys do with this training. You know, we've kind of put our heads together around this. And if you guys love the content that Grow Workspace creates for you to save time, not only in sharing and educating your members, but in using your Get Oiling system, I think you're going to be really excited to see what they've put together. Because I mean, a lot of what you guys are showing specifically where the website is concerned, it's using this platform. It's, this is a Get Oiling based training, right?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you know, we're chatting with you and we're talking to your people. So I'm guessing all of you do have Get Oiling and that is going to be the best way to approach, you know, how we're, how we're offering this content and this training and these tools. In theory, you could have other platforms, but it's definitely going to take you a lot longer. So having Get Oiling is key to making this the most efficient way to get to the point where you can start engaging and, and educating and, you know, being present and helping out your, your team.
Excellent, excellent. You guys, so go to getoiling.com/growwebinar so you can get your seat here. This is time sensitive. So this is going to be a live masterclass that's coming up. So you're going to want to register for this. Please try to make arrangements so that you can be there live. You're really going to want to be there live for this. If you absolutely must, then, you know, go for the recording if you absolutely must. But either way, make sure that you head over here and register, getoiling.com/growwebinar, invite your teams. This is a free masterclass hosted by our friends over at Grow Workspace. So Claire, thank you so very much. And we'll get back. I know you guys have got a really busy day. So thank you for being here.
Awesome. Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, absolutely. All right. So I would like to now pop things over to Greg, who has been hard at work at giving our platform a facelift. So how many of you guys, just a quick show of hands? How many of you guys have logged into your Get Oiling system in the last couple of days and noticed some significant changes? Let us know in the, in the chat, you know, what, what are your thoughts? Is there anything that you feel like you can't find anymore? Are you confused? Let us know. We can walk you through it. We are really excited to, to walk through this. So without further ado, Greg, let's, let's talk about our own makeover at GoOiling.
Sounds good. I, I was trying to find some fancy gift to go with this, but I didn't find any in time. I'm sure there's some makeover gift out there. We could queue up for this, but, but yeah, so no, I'm super excited about these changes. Thanks for the comments here in chat. It's nice to see, this kind of came from, you know, just everybody over the recent times, you know, just saying, hey, you know, is there some way to like organize some of these things a little bit better, you know, make it faster, whatever. So kind of put our heads together and did some thinking about how this might look and what, you know, what we could do to make it a little bit, little bit better. And here we go. So this came out, I think it was yesterday or the day before, it's just earlier this week. And as of the time of this filming here anyway, but yeah, some pretty big change. And just the biggest change you probably notice is the menu has been reorganized a little bit and actually quite a lot. And then there's this newer kind of look and feel here that applies to on pretty much every screen in the system. So the, the menu, it got organized according to like what's in some of the features have proved to be more popular than others. And so now those are like surface to the top level over here. So you can get quick access to them without having to bury and, or dive into a settings menu or some sub-menu and scroll down. So contacts hasn't changed a whole lot. You can see dashboard got moved up to the top. And campaigns is now out at the top level so that you don't have to click under settings to see that. Some of the other items like follow-up plans and save replies and so on, those are still under there because they're not quite, they're not used quite as frequently. As campaigns, campaigns are used very often, according to what I've been looking at. Also, everything here with related to the website has been organized into this one section here. I mean, with some exceptions, I guess, like events and blog poster down here as well. But anything regarding, you know, custom pages, landing pages, resource bundles, like builder links, colors, activity, that's all kind of in this website menu here. If you missed this change from, I guess, it's probably been a couple of months. There's a really super simple way now to set your homepage. You can just go to customize my site, pick what you want to be on your homepage and save. And it's just updates it. You don't have to go through the menu editor like we used to do. So that's really, really simple way to change your homepage. That'll hide like the built-in Young Living themes. If you want that, a lot of people want to have their own homepage and then you can go add that onto the menu. But you can kind of see the same look and feel as throughout the site here as you, you know, as you click on things. The, the my contacts, you know, they've been updated a little bit, but the other functionality is pretty much the same as it was. So once you, once you get to that spot, it pretty much will operate as it was before. There's a couple of exceptions, one of them being the menu editor, but let me just, I'll show you kind of the newer look and feel with the, with sort of the pages that used to have those little tiny tables on them. This here now is designed to be a lot more mobile friendly. Previously, it didn't really look very good on a mobile phone. And so now if I shrink this down, you can see the buttons are big, which is really easy when you're trying to work on a phone. You can just tap it with your thumb instead of having to be very precise with a fingertip on those tiny little links that were there before. So much more mobile friendly. That's prime, you know, one of the primary drivers of this design was to be a little bit easier to use on your phone and to make the font bigger because I mean, hey, it's just easier to see the big bold font than it was the tiny little font in a little tiny table. So that's a nice, a nice little upgrade. The mini bars have all been kind of standard or these button bars have been standardized across the top two. So that as you're looking at each of these pages, they all kind of follow the same sort of layout with some exceptions. You know, some pages are a little bit different, but like resource bundles, anything that's like a list of stuff you create kind of has the same sort of look and feel. The menu editor has a pretty big upgrade here too. You can see it looks way different than it used to before. You can kind of see the stack. And so the like if I view, view her web site here across the top. And I mean, it's, you can reorder them easily, just drag them around. And then even within, so this is something you couldn't do before. I'll just add a couple of random, random items to the menu here to show how this looks. But I'll just grab these. And previously you couldn't drag menu items from one header to another. But now you can do that. It just makes it so much easier to move things across. You know, you couldn't do that before visually. It's just a lot easier to process and understand what's going on. And again, this also works on a mobile phone, something that was next impossible to do before you can actually do on your phone. In case you have the desire to modify your menu while you're waiting in line or somewhere. It does happen, but sometimes people use their phone and that's exactly what they have on hand. And it's good to be able to access it in both ways. Resource bundles, we kind of pulled those up to the top here because those, you know, even though they're, they were originally designed for sharing resources with other Get Oiling customers. Some people have started using them to organize their own content. And, and so now it's just sort of a change the name a little bit and it's just more of a conceptual shift. The functionality is all the same, but the idea is that you can create bundles of your own, your own assets. So you don't have to, don't, you do not have to share them, but you can use them to keep yourself organized. Like for example, if you want, you know, all these, you know, everything regarding this one funnel, you could put that in there. It's not in this account here, but like, you know, if there, if there's one of these that has something in there, yeah, it's got these, these templates, whatever. You can group all your assets together. So like, if you have a, let's say you've got a lead magnet, a downloadable that you've got on your website. You could have inside your resource bundle, you could put the landing page, the campaign, maybe you've got an automation, maybe there's a thank you page. You could put that all together so that you have it organized in one space. And then you don't have to like click around with the various parts of the system to find it. It'll just all be listed there when you go to your resource bundle and you don't have to share it at all. You know, you can, that's an optional thing. That would be something you could do if you would want to do that. The, the colors and font screen has been improved a little bit. The color selection's a little bit bigger. And this is I think on premium or higher or basic with the branding package. But it's designed a little bit better. So it's easier to use again on mobile and the color swatches are bigger. So they're not quite so tiny. So you don't have to squint so much to see if that's the right color. The member area is now kind of at the top level, which is great. You don't have to click through to the member area sub-menu anymore. Your vaults classes and the setup are all right at the top. And they now have the image preview of whatever your main photo is, you can easily, so the Zooms, events and blog posts are all down here now. And just kind of organize together and then you've got your other stuff down there. So yeah, it's been, it's a big overhaul. All navigation. But yeah, so I think that's kind of the, the highlights there of, of everything. I see there's a lot of messages in the chat. I haven't read them all. So thank you for whatever you have in there.
Definitely a lot of, a, a, a lot of folks love these updates. So I, yeah, this is, this is really great. I'm, I'm loving sort of relearning the way to, to use it, right? I've, I've been using this years so consistently for so long. And maybe this is the case for some of you guys too. But I actually find that it makes a lot more sense now. Like I, I find this much more intuitive and just, just awesome improvements across the board. So excellent. Yeah, there, there have been a lot of improvements over time. For those of you who have, you know, maybe been on a little bit of a Get Oiling vacation for a bit, there have been some updates to the
Using it for a couple of weeks before.
Sorry, I think I have connection issues here.
Okay. Yeah, it's sort of something about the member area.
Yeah, yeah. We, we had made changes fairly recently to, you know, being able to add photos and things like that. Just not just on the how our user sees the system, but on how your members would see your member area. For instance, there's, there's been a lot of great changes of late that you guys should definitely, when you see up in the, up here where it says type to find something, if you ever see a little red circle there with a number in it, there's going to be an announcement there showing you some of the more recent changes that have taken place in our system. If you ever want to catch yourself up, that's there.
Awesome.
Yeah, awesome. Thank you. All right. So we did have Joy requested a site review. And, and we also had a great question here from Lynn about sales pages. So if you guys have any other questions, if you have any questions about what Greg just shared with us, then you know, definitely go ahead and share those. And if you have any questions for us to address here, if you have something you'd like for us to look at while we're on the call here today, then, then go ahead and let us know. Did see a question come in in the chat here real quick. Yes. So Carrie, these calls, what you're on right now is totally free and available to anyone. But the, but Get Oiling actually does have a pricing structure if you're using our system, what Greg was just showing you. And you can learn more about that at getoiling.com. Just click the little button that has, or it's, well, click the signup button. It shows you all the different plans. And of course you can scroll through and read all kinds of great stuff on the pages there. And if you have any questions here, we're actually, you know, happy to answer those here as well. So, all right. So I want to, I want to address Lynn's question here real quick and then Joy, I want to bring you out and then actually look through your site together. So Lynn, you're asking what we recommend for building a sales page, a landing page or a custom page? Absolutely, absolutely a custom page for a sales page. Now you do have the option, if you are selling a vault, to use the checkout page of your vault as a sales page. And if you want some further clarification on that, we're happy to show you some examples. Just let us know in the, in the Q and A and we can do that. But if you want to have a page that actually kind of sets somebody up to click a button and enter their payment information, that is something that you definitely want to have on a custom page inside of Get Oiling. All right. So Joy, I'd like to find you. If you could please raise your hand for me. I might be able to find you more quickly. There we go.
Hi.
Hi, how's it going?
Good. How are you?
Great. Glad to have you here today. So yeah, let's, let's talk.
Okay. Um, so goodness, I don't know where to start. I just, I took one of the templates and I've just kind of started customizing it. But I wanted to make sure I was on the right track. And then also, I've got some, a blog post saved, but kind of at the point where I'm like, is it good to start putting the link out if I don't have everything in place? Um, so kind of in that limbo section of what do I do? What are the steps that need to be in place before I really start?
Yeah, I got you. So, so this guide here, is this connected? Does this give something away?
So that was actually with the, um, I haven't changed that. That was with the template. It popped up and I sent it to myself. It does have something, but it's not anything I created. So I also don't know, I don't know how to change that to something I created.
Oh, okay. So well, let's, let's go find that in your account and I'll show you how to do that. So that's going to be under the pages of your website in this new menu. Exciting. So this is home. I assume, nope, that's not it. Do you happen to know, is it my homepage? Here we go. Okay. So the way that you're going to figure out what's, what, what is shown when you click here. And then of course, what, what people get and where they go is going to be under your settings and under leads. So this is where you can change all of this language, right? And then this actually says no campaign and it goes to a thank you page. So this isn't actually going anywhere at all. So do you have a lead magnet?
Um, I do, but I've kind of shifted a little bit. So I've got to put in my new. I don't have the one that I want in there on the site yet.
Okay, no worries. Well, so what you can do, and you have a thank you page on your site. So that's good. So here's what I would say, if you don't have a lead magnet yet, that's totally fine. Tell them why they should give you their information. So let them know. You know, I periodically send out my favorite tips and tricks, or maybe you have a Facebook group, or maybe you're just on social or whatever. You know, or you could say, I'd love to share with you what I know about going from surviving to thriving or whatever. And then just make whatever the promise is. So is the promise, sign up for email. You could certainly do that. And then you could just change this language here. And so since you're not giving a guide away, you could say, sign up for email right here. And then what you want to make sure you do is, you know, make sure that whatever your thank you page is that you're connecting to says, hey, check your email. And then you will want to make a campaign, just one quick message that says, hey, thank you for signing up. I'm excited to get in touch with you. Hit reply and tell me one thing you want to know or something like that. And they attach that campaign here and then just make sure that they've got a tag, right? And the tag here would be homepage lead, or the tag could be adrenal fatigue, because that's what you're talking about on this front page of your website, right? So have those there so that you'll be able to easily go back and find the people who signed up right here, right?
Okay, that's, that's another one of my questions. Like how, how do you make it automatically tag them? And that's in, in this section that you're showing me?
That's correct. Yep. So you would add the tag adrenal fatigue here, if I can spell it right. And that'll be a tag. We'll call this homepage lead, since they're on your homepage. And then of course you would add whatever the campaign is, and then that's done. And then you save it. And then anybody who from that point forward fills out this form and you will want to change what's here. So that, you know, we're not talking about a guide for a life as a busy mom. We're talking about, you know, hey, from time to time, I share stuff on social and I'd like to notify you of when I put things out there. Then you put that here. But when they do this, they will then be tagged with whatever you put right here.
Okay. And that's under settings to lead, right?
That's right. That's in the page settings, under the leads tab. That's right. Yep. Just make sure that you change the language that's on here so that it's congruent with whatever it is that you're promising. You just want to make sure you're following through on the promise that you're making. So if it's, if it's a guide, you want to give them a guide. If it's a video, you give them a video and so on. And so you just want to be clear about what you're giving them. And so I think as soon as you have that in place here, then, you know, then, then yeah, you're absolutely good to go. You know, this should have contact. It looks like it does. Perfect. You've got a community here, I assume that's maybe, is that a Facebook group?
Yeah.
Excellent. And then small steps to change your life today. And what's, what's that?
Um, I've got like a PDF of a small steps type thing, but I have not linked it. So I link it by doing Small steps type thing, but I have not linked it. So I link it by doing.
Well, why don't you? Why don't you put that here? So, you know, if 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 there's a way for you to position that small steps document that you have to help a mom with adrenal fatigue. Then why don't we say I help moms with adrenal fatigue, go from surviving to thriving? All it takes is a few simple steps. You can get started by downloading my guide and then have that be the guide here. Okay, that could work?
Yeah.
And there's no harm in adding that down here to the bottom as well. You can have two calls to action to the same thing on the same page. There's no problem with that. And so then what you would do is. Make sure that you're clear about what it is that you're giving them and especially, you know, the context of what you're giving them to. This message about adrenal fatigue, right? So make sure that we're congruent with that. They're going to they're going to get access to it, download it. And then what you're going to want to do, keep the thank you page and then whatever the campaign is that you're adjusting or that you're adding to this. Make sure that you upload your your PDF to that campaign. Do you know how to do that? It's all good, all good, all good. Simple step. Do you have a campaign already?
I have like for my new members and stuff like that. I have that.
All all good. So the simple steps guide is going to be the campaign. We create the campaign. And now that's there. And then all you're going to do when you create a new message for this is we say. So we'll just say, here's the guide you asked for and then you give them a message, you know. Have their first name. I'm so glad you're taking. Steps to a better life or however, you know, you say this however you want to. And then what you're going to do is right here under more rich, the soul plus button, you're going to upload a file. Right here, you can either drag and drop if you've got a big screen like I do at home and I do not today, or you click. And then you go to your file manager in your computer. And then you find whatever the PDF is that you want to upload here. And I don't have any PDFs like, oh, actually I do. Here we go. Here's workbook. I'm just gonna add that one. Right here. Okay, so this PDF is now here. And what you can do is you can just right here when you go to edit link, just say click here.
Okay.
Updates. So click here to download. It now, okay? And and then ask him to hit reply and say something, whatever. You know, then then that's that's basically it. And you add that message. So now the campaign's ready. And then what you want to do is you want to come over here to this page. And we do need to save and refresh this page. So it'll actually show that campaign that we just created. I'm so used to fast internet. This is so different for me. Okay, here we go. All right, under settings leads. Now we're going to go and find that adrenal. Where did it go? Did I finish saving it? Okay, oh, simple steps. That's why I didn't even know the name of it. Sorry. Okay, simple steps. Okay, so simple steps guide. So now. If we save this, when someone opts in right here. On this page, they're going to see a message from you about what they're going to get. Then they're going to go to the thank you page next. It's going to say, go check your email, or that's what your thank you page should say. And then when they check their email, they're going to get that email that we just made right here. That's going to have your PDF that you're going to need to go back and swap out and, you know, actually add your your real guide, not that random file I just took from my computer. Right?
Yes, it does.
Awesome. Okay, well, good. So so yeah, then once you have that in place, then you can keep. I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. Go ahead and finish your thought.
Oh, oh, no, I was just going to say, just, you know, you can leave this exactly the same. So where this the link here is to lead. It's going to just use the pop up on the page. So your homepage is totally good to go from that point.
Okay. Um, I was going to ask about the verbiage. Should I use adrenal fatigue verbiage or no? Or is it just? I don't know. I feel like that's. Like if people realize they have it, then they'll be searching for it, but then a lot of people don't realize they have it. So they wouldn't know that that's them.
Yeah, so it kind of depends, right? I mean, I I have clients who are, you know, like naturopaths, for instance, who are very. Very kind of focused in on working with someone who knows what they're dealing with, right? But then you're right, in some cases, people don't know what adrenal fatigue is or if that's the thing that they have. So. It really kind of depends on who you know your person is and where they are right now. If they are already pretty far along in their process of self discovery and healing and just sort of figuring out where they are. Then using the words adrenal fatigue might make sense to them. But if you kind of look around at the people who you really think are the right fit for you and you feel like. You know, if you maybe you say I help stressed out moms go from surviving to thriving, that that might land a little. A little more effectively with them. Then, you know, you may want to try that out. It really just kind of depends on your person and and how. I would say if if they are already, if they've crossed the precipice into full on self advocate health nerd and they know what adrenal fatigue is now. Then keep it. But if you're working with people who are just starting on their journey, I might change it to, you know, stressed out, strung out, something like that.
Like my Facebook group, I call it from burnout to balance. So I guess I could just bring in that language.
Yes. Yeah, I I think that's a good idea.
Okay, one more question. Since I originally bought my domain name and all of that, my husband has kind of started partnering with me. It's really throwing me off. I'm just kidding. I love it. But like we run our group together and he does lives once a week. Is it okay that I've still got like my own webpage? Or do you think I need to just revamp everything? Because obviously this is feminine and. Should I still like speak to moms or should we have more of a couple website?
So. I would advocate for you keeping on doing what you're doing. And allowing the involvement that he has to evolve. With you so that you guys can really decide sort of what that next step is, right? Because you're focusing in really on moms. And that may or may not be a focus that he's going to share with you. It may be that you create and and really kind of love on on this this hub of moms that you've created. But then with your husband, you create something that serves just a slightly different group of people, right? Maybe that includes the dads, maybe that. Becomes maybe even a different family focus altogether, or maybe it's not family, it's hobby or it's whatever, right? So I think that the best move generally is to serve a smaller group of people. Really well, a very focused group of people really, really well. Because the opportunities for where you can expand next will really typically be born out of that. So, yeah, so I I wouldn't, I wouldn't sort of zoom out just yet. Keep y'all, y'all keep working together. I think that's a beautiful and amazing thing. But allow what you're doing to kind of grow into, you know, where you can sort of see. How you might brand, I don't know, a new offering with him, right?
Okay, like we have quite a bit of men in our group because of his involvement. So.
Oh, cool.
Facebook group is not really specific to moms. It started out that way, but then when he joined, it's like, because he he, we both deal with adrenal fatigue. And so a lot of men are like, oh, man, you know, maybe I'm dealing with this and anyways. He had a really dramatic. Decline. So everyone, lots of people know about it because of it was just all of a sudden for him. So I kind of feel I tell them, I'm like, people join because they want it. They're nosy and they wanted to hear about you. But, um. So that's the part I'm like, well, I guess I could still bring people in though. And keep that. Like you said, keep that message and if one day we need to split it, make another group or whatever, I guess we can.
Yeah, yeah. So a couple of things. There's actually a great, great comment that came up in the chat here. And and this is seasoned advice from someone with young living for 20 years. You know, adrenal fatigue is a key word, maybe something that could cause you some compliance issues. So that that may be one to to consider as well. You know, aside from also, again, the fact that, you know. Your people may not know what that means. You know, one thing that you could do where your husband's story could really be leveraged to inspire people. And to really kind of fulfill the curiosity that people are are seeking when they come to your are seeking to resolve when they come to your group. Why don't you make a page on your website that's about your husband's story? And then invite people to maybe watch a video. Maybe you guys make a video to learn more about it. Make this like a little funnel. Include that in your Facebook group. So if you're here, you wanting to know about his story. Then, you know, then here's where you go and you can have that be a page on your good oiling site that's maybe very specifically dedicated to what he's doing. And yeah, if you start to see that a ton of people are showing up because they're just really curious what this guy's doing, then, you know. You got a sign there that maybe there's there's sort of a new direction that you guys maybe could pursue together.
Yeah. Do another page.
Yeah, anytime you have something that's capturing people's attention that they're asking questions about or that they're interested in. That's that's a great reason to create a page that tells the whole story. So the curious can know what they want to know right now. And you don't have to be the one that's repeating it every single time somebody needs to hear it.
I like that.
Awesome. Well, do you have any other questions? Anything else you want to look at?
Um, I don't think so. That gives me plenty to work on. Thank you.
Uh huh. Thanks for coming out. All right, Lynn had a follow up here interested in seeing examples. So I can show you, let's see, actually, I I think I can show you a two in one. Where there is an actual sales page for something and then there is actually a vault checkout page. Think this is a two in one. I want to double check myself real quick before I go show this. Treat. So this is, this is a sales page for a retreat. That a member of our community is hosting next month. In October in Maine. And she has a sales page, which is on the good oiling site. But then there is also a a checkout page, which could be considered. A sales page as well, if you wanted to use it on its own. Now, the reason why, and I'll show you guys this in a minute as soon as it's done loading. The reason why this is set up the way that it is, is because she has payment plans. Made available for the. For for the retreat and where you want to have a multi part payment plan, you're going to be using a vault in our system. And and so we actually have basically the breakdown. Of the sales page has everything that they need to know about the whole experience and everything they're going to do and see and all of that. And then and then on the the page where we're actually giving them a call to action to secure their seat, they're going to a second page. And please forgive me, you guys, it is taking absolutely forever for me to open up. And and show you guys this page. It is it is not wanting to load very quickly for me. So I may need to show you guys a different, a different page that is a sales page. Let me see if I can do that. This may actually work better. We'll see. Okay, so and actually, this one I'm about to show you guys is from one of our community members. She is the Young Living Gold Leader. And we co-created a course called Modern Social Mama. It is still loading, but I'll go ahead and show you the the vault sales page for Angela's retreat. Okay, so Angela is having a retreat in Maine next month and it's called the Magnificent You and it's beautiful. And you can see how, you know, have an account login here. You don't see her normal website menu up here. Right? Because this actually is the front page of her member area. If she is charging for someone to get into a vault. Now for her retreat. People are purchasing access to a literal place that they're going to have a retreat. But they are also going to be purchasing access to a vault where all of the, you know, different. Information for the retreat and the communication and everything after the fact is going to be stored. So the payment options are here on the page. All of the details are here. Somebody could be sent straight to this page. And make all of the decisions that they need to make, learning about everybody who's gonna, you know, be at the retreat and all that kind of stuff. That's all right here. So this is the front page. This would be a vault sales page. And barring my connection and whether or not I can effectively show this to you, or maybe Greg, you could do this. When you're setting up a vault and you set up payment options, there is a checkout page where you can put this information in here. Now, the other option would be a sales page. Now, you notice this is a regular menu. This is a custom homepage or a custom page. On the good oiling site. This is a course that that I helped Jessica Doman to create, teaching how to use our system, using her. Her strategies to grow on social media and grow Young Living specifically. So you see how we're breaking down all of these different elements of what's involved. This is also selling a vault, right? These both sell access to a vault, but this is a custom page, right? And so the payment is actually taken on this page. People can purchase here and the setup for this page is such that people get added to that vault. From this page after they purchase, right? So those are the two different options. So you've got a vault checkout page and you've got this page. So if you've got a multi part payment like this one, where you've got a three part payment in the case of Angela's retreat. You will, you'll want to use a vault. Otherwise, you can easily use either. And I was curious of this. Oh, yeah. So this is her actual sales page for the retreat. Which is not really scrolling very well on my very wonky computer right now. This is. Running Zoom right now is clearly too much for this this MacBook Air. Anyway, so hopefully you guys got that. Maybe I'm not frozen. Am I frozen? Concerned about this.
Nope, I can hear you.
Okay, thank you. You were frozen for me. Great. All right. So hopefully that helps. If you have any follow up questions, feel free. So those are two examples. More often than not, I would definitely recommend using a custom page for a sales page, though. You know, and maybe have, hey, do you want the payment plan and send them over to the vault to make the payment plan if you're doing it that way? Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Do you want any walkthroughs, reviews of your work before we get going? Otherwise, we're gonna, we're gonna go let you guys dive into the new get oiling interface, maybe. You know, try updating your website from your phone today, because that's going to go over really well because all these amazing changes. Yeah, really, really excited about all of this stuff. And guys, also, just a quick reminder. Make sure that you go and invite your friends who would benefit from this to grow workspaces training coming up. You can register for that at get oiling.com forward slash grow webinar G R O and the word webinar, all one word. And and you guys can sign up for that class. I'm actually really excited to go through it and see what they created. Because they are teaching how to use our platform to create a website in a day, one day. Really exciting stuff. So, all right, well, if that's it, if you guys don't have any questions, then let's go and get back to work. We'll be back here next week, same time. And, oh, and next week, you guys, we have a special guest who is going to be sharing some of her experiences. With the new shopping platform and how she is successfully and easily signing up new members. Using the new Young Living shopping platform, a lot of stuff to get excited about. I hope you all are super energized. About growing your business because, oh, my gosh, if you're not, come talk to me. You should be. This is the best time to be growing and living and we are so excited to help you grow with this platform. So. Yeah, thanks again for being here, you guys. We get back to Brady Bunch and we will see you all again next week. Bye, guys.